For the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, thank you for bringing us together safely this evening. We pray for those suffering across our nation. Bless the efforts of all those providing aid to those in need of food, clothing, and shelter. Please protect the first responders who keep us safe at their own peril. As we celebrate this Thanksgiving season, we thank you for our families who will gather to give thanks for all our blessings. Let us be thankful throughout the year for friends, family, freedom, health, and for your grace. May we live this and every day conscious of all that has been given to us. In your holy name, amen.
Can I have a moment of silence also for the Allen family? Ms. Allen passed away, who was very active in civil rights and very active in the city of Hammond for a number of years, and also a neighbor and a member, life member of the NAACP. Also, Mr. Creighton, who was also a mentor in my life, and he will be deeply missed. He lived in the 1100 block of Lyons, and as a kid, he was one of my instructors as a Boy Scout. So unfortunate. His wife is now gone, he's gone, and his daughter's passed away. So Dallas, all he has is his nephew and his immediate family. And also for the victims that were shot in Chicago, senselessly during an altercation, young lady's boyfriend got upset or something and ran into hospital, and three people were killed. An officer in Chicago and a young lady, a nurse, and it's just sad, but... Thank you so much.
I would like to add to that in the respect that the two of the women that were shot, the one doctor, I believe she's like from Portage or LaPorte, and the lady, last name Les, who was the pharmacist, she's a graduate of Purdue, she just finished her six years of pharmacy school, was first year over there. She's from St. John's, she's a St. John's resident. So when you see some of these national tragedies that happen, I mean, they say it doesn't hit close to home, but in this case here, it was right across the border, and here we had two individuals, that one lived in St. John's and I believe one in Portage. Thank you.
Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Vanez.
Here. Let the record reflect, nine present, zero absent. For the record, I would like to state that the Hammond Common Council met in executive session on November 13th, 14th, and 15th to conduct interviews for personnel. I would also like to announce that this evening, Ms. Jessica Castillo from the Area Career Center is here with some of her students. She sent me an email. I welcome her and thank you for coming. Thank you. Welcome. Alrighty, reading of the minutes.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from November 5th, 2018, and be placed on file, please.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, to accept the minutes of the meeting from November 5th. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Markovich.
I would like to have an additional conversation listed under when a motion was made to send Sharon Daniels, the Personnel Director for filling out of job applications. Full disclosure of all discussion that was made by the council at the time, addition to page 19 and page 20 of the minutes, I so move.
Second.
What is it that you're adding to page 19?
There's conversation that's on the tape that's not listed, there are discussions between the council persons, so I would like to have that all included on there and noted in the minutes.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Torres, to add the additional conversation to page 19 on the minutes from November 5th. Any discussion?
Correction, 19 and 20, and also during the roll call discussion, when roll call was being voted on.
Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now for... I did not ask for a vote on the minutes, correct?
Yeah, you just did that.
But that was the amendment.
Oh.
You voted on both of them.
I did, okay. Okay, good enough, just double checking. Okay, moving on to approval of claims.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims October 31st, 2018 through November 14th, 2018, for council meeting November 20th, 2018, beginning with claims dated 11/7/18 and ending with claims dated 11/14/18, claim number 6655 through claim number 6933, for a total of $12,126,059.39, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, for approval of claims from October 31st through November 14th. Any discussion? Any discussion? Councilman, I thought you had some...
Do we have additional? Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Amendments to the claim.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
I'd like to add a couple claims. Claim number 6934 for $2,366.78, it's for Bownet Sports, it's for additional supplies that they need at the sports complex.
What was the amount again? Thank you.
Claim number 6935, $2,957.25 to BSN Sports, again for supplies and equipment that they need at the sports complex. Claim number 6936, $2,015.17 to BSN Sports, again for supplies and equipment they need at the sports complex, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, for approval of claims, or the addition of claims, number 6934, in the amount of $2,366.78. Claim number 6935, in the amount of, if I got that correctly, $2,965.39, is that correct?
What number of claim is that, Madam President?
6935.
6935 would be $2,957.25.
Oh boy, was I off on that. $2,957.25, you said?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And claim number 6936, in the amount of $2,015.17. Any discussion?
There's one more claim, did you get 6934?
Yes, I did. $2,366.78. That's, okay, what I said. Alrighty, any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please, on the amendment.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Amendment passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Now for claims as written.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Amendment passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Now for claims as written.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Claims pass, nine in favor, zero opposed. Public hearings, there are none. Communications?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to announce a Thanksgiving Feed the Homeless event that's being held in my district this evening from 4:00 to 8:00, at Lulu's Barber's College, 5625 Holman Avenue, Hammond, Indiana. It's a Thanksgiving for the homeless. What will be served is baked, macaroni and cheese, sweet potatoes, green beans, white potatoes, rotisserie chicken, turkey, pecan pie, cheesecake, soda, water, and juice, fun music, and food. Clothes and other necessities will be available, free haircuts and shaves will also be available. Happy holidays from all of us, and thank you so much. Anyone's interested, you're more than welcome to come out and attend, and when I leave here, I will be heading there as well.
Any other communications?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I would like to thank Councilman Spitali and Councilman Markovich for their participation in my annual food dinner that I give at the Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza for the residents that live in that facility. I really appreciate your help, Councilman Markovich, coming out and participating and helping us with that event. The residents look forward to it, and it's an annual event that I've been doing for, I don't know, maybe about 17 years. So thank you again for your support and your help.
Any other communications?
Madam Chairlady.
Councilman Markovich.
Received correspondence dated September 19th from the city clerk that the executive session in Hammond Council, the city of Hammond, was held on September 19th at 5:30 in the Hammond City Council chambers. Roll call was taken, Markovich, Spitali, Kalwinski, Torres, Higgs, Emerson, Warple, Rakels, Vanez, and the topic was city council personnel.
Who did you receive that from?
City clerk. There's copies in our mailboxes.
Any other communications?
Madam Chairlady.
Councilman Markovich.
Minutes at a common council meeting dated November 15th, an executive session at Hammond Common Council, the city of Hammond, was to be held on November 15th at 6:00 PM in the Hammond City Caucus Room. The Hammond City Clerk's office was present. It says here there was no meeting held. There's also a legal notice in the newspaper stating that, notice of executive session, please take notice at the Hammond Common Council, the city of Hammond will hold an executive session on Tuesday, November 20th, immediately following the Hammond Common Council meeting. Pursuant to Indiana Code, the meeting will be held in the council's caucus room, room 205, second floor, Hammond City Hall, 5925 Calumet Avenue. As motioned at the Hammond Common Council meeting on November 5th, the following will be discussed, personnel and litigation from the city clerk's office.
Thank you. Any other communication?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I would like to just read a card to thank you from. Also, we fed people from within the community who were less fortunate and possibly wasn't going to have a Thanksgiving dinner at the Philistine on this past Saturday, and the Breakfast Club held that. And it just says, "Councilman Anthony Higgs, you made such a difference, and it is deeply appreciated. Respectfully submitted. Faith, hope, and love. Douglas Lade, Senior and Family."
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications are now closed. Moving on to committee reports.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Finance will be reporting out 1825 and 1826.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Rakels.
Police and Fire will be bringing out 1827.
Thank you. And as I always do, I will read the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. Community watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza, that's not the one I wanted to read. East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch is meeting this evening, as a matter of fact, at 6:30 PM, so as soon as you leave here, you can go over there. That's at the Ophelia Steen Center. Edison Community Watch will meet Wednesday, December 5th, 6:30 PM at Edison School. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, December 4th, 6:30 PM at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, December 7th, 9:15 AM at Irving School. Lafayette Neighborhood Watch will meet Wednesday, November 21st, 6:30 PM at Lafayette School. Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will meet Tuesday, November 27th, 6:30 PM at the American Legion on Goslin. This is the time of the year that each and every one of us are potential victims of those who try to take advantage of our blessings. I encourage you to go to these meetings, find out how you can protect yourself and your family and your property, and also watch out for those around you, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Moving on to ordinance, third and final passage.
Ordinance 18-25, sponsored by Councilman Warple, and ordinance creating a new fund, Fund Number 275, for the City of Hammond Fire Department for grant funds.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I move for final passage and adoption of 1825.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Rakels, for final passage of ordinance number 1825. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
The ordinance pretty much explains itself by title, but just to reiterate, we are not transferring any funds into this. This is just the account so grants can go into this fund when they are received.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
Basically, what it does is allows individuals, when they apply for grants to help the fire department, the line item will be identified and such so that you know where exactly the funding is going.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 1825 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance number 18-26, sponsored by Councilman Warple, and ordinance creating a new non-reverting fund, Fund Number 258, for Hammond Fire Department donations.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I move for final passage and adoption of ordinance 1826.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Rakels, for final passage of 1826. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Basically, it's the same thing as myself and my colleague explained, except this pertains to a line item for donations that the firemen may collect over the years, it actually creates the account they can put that money in.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 1826 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 18-27, sponsored by Councilman Rakels, and ordinance to create a new section of Chapter 93, Fire Prevention, regarding maintenance of privately owned fire hydrants in Hammond.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Rakels.
I move for final passage and adoption of 1827.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Rakels, who did I hear over here? Second by Councilman Kalwinski, for final passage of 1827. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Yes, this is just an ordinance requested by the Hammond Fire Department to help maintain guidelines and rules and regulations for private hydrant systems owned by private companies. It's a way for them to let the fire department know exactly what they're doing and maintaining, mostly maintaining their system in case they need to use it, in case the fire department needs to use it.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
Just to reiterate, basically what it does, this particular ordinance allows them to inspect those privately owned businesses to make sure that their fire hydrants are safe enough so in case a fire should happen, they have the ability to utilize the water, which is, if it's working in their facility.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate the conversation on this. Remember, there are parts of the city, like the Interstate Plaza, that are private developments, but that have hydrants, and oftentimes, when there's a fire, we pull up in these private developments, and they're, you know, their hydrant's totally dead, unpressurized, I'm sure Councilman Rakels could tell you stories about that. But what this will give us, if it's passed by the council, it'll give us the ability to act like code enforcement when it comes to hydrants, and to make sure that they're ready when the emergency arises, so I really appreciate you guys considering this.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
It's basically for the safety of all the residences of the city of Hammond.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Please, uh, no, but, Madam, Councilman Markovich, your votes, yes.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, nine in favor, zero opposed. 1827 passes.
President Vanez, that concludes the reading of the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Introduction of ordinances, there are none. Resolutions, there are none. New and unfinished business.
Madam President.
Item, Item A. Ordinance 18-28, sponsored by the petitioner Uniferous Corporation for Vance of Use from zoning ordinance to allow a central plant facility for dry cleaners and laundries located at 1200 through 1600 141st Street and 4009 through 4043 Calumet Avenue, within the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
I move for passage of 18-28.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali, for final passage of 1828. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Tonight, we'd be approving this petition to allow a variance of use for a central plant facility for dry cleaners and laundries at 4009 to 4043 Calumet Avenue, subject to the conditions as stated in the petition.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I would like to personally thank Mr. Robert Brown and their company for investing in Hammond. It's a great investment, $45 million, I applaud your efforts, and thank you for staying in Hammond.
Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Kalwinski.
In discussions in caucus, what was mentioned was there are 95 employees with Uniferous now, and that they'll be looking at a 10% bump when they finish building their new facility. Also, approximately 60% or more of the employees are Hammond residents, and when you total out the building, the property, and the machinery, the investment will range between 12 and 14 million dollars. And so, we're grateful that while they're leaving the second district, they're remaining in Hammond in the first district, and also met with them before this petition to see what the landscaping would look like and the design on the outside, and there was some discussion and agreements about some upgrades to the property that weren't included initially. So thank you to Uniferous and all the fellows that I worked with to get that done. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'm sure the mayor is extremely happy about this project as well. He probably want to speak in regards to this project as well, the benefit of keeping them in Hammond. Mayor, would you like to say something?
Yes, Councilman?
I was wondering if you would like to say anything on behalf of us?
I'm not a very shy person, Councilman.
I'm sorry?
I'm not a very shy person. I usually come up to speak for myself when I want to speak. I appreciate you summoning me, though.
Okay.
But no, this is a great project, and it's a success story. I've heard a couple people already say that they're moving out of the second into the first, that's not the case at all. Actually, this is a case of success. They got too big for their building, then they had to do multiple shifts, and they're trying to hire more people so that they can get it done in one shift. So their current location is located between the railroad tracks on Calumet, and they're literally limited by size. So this is a success story from the second district. This is a piece of property at 141st and Calumet that's been vacant since I've been mayor, which is a long time. It's a good addition to the first, but I don't want anybody to think that they're moving from the second, because they were very successful in the second district, which is why they have to move to the first, because physically, they're unable to stay in the current space. So thank you very much, Councilman Higgs. I wasn't trying to be disrespectful, it's just you guys were doing a pretty good job on your own, so, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other discussion?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Torres.
As Councilman of the second district, I'm not bitter at all that they're moving from the second district, I'm just happy that they're staying in Hammond. Well, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 1828 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, Clerk Golick. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
Received the correspondence from the Hammond Resource Equal Employment Opportunity and all department heads from Heather Gray, City Controller, that says attached, please find the revised Educational Assistance Program Form for reimbursement tuition expenses for employees. Also included is a copy of the 2004 Executive Order authorizing this program. If you have employees that will be seeking reimbursement for tuition assistance, they must use this form, follow the procedure outlined in the Executive Order, and provide all the required documentation. Reimbursement to employees of your department is contingent upon the department having Reimbursement to employees of your department is contingent upon the department having funds available within their budget. If you have any questions, the employees regarding the Educational Assistance Program, please call Sharon Daniels at two one nine, eight five three, six five oh one.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I would like to thank, uh, the Public Works Department in regards to fifty-six oh three Calumet Avenue, where there was abandoned property in my district for a number of years where they were just basically throwing all kinds of debris behind the building. And on a number of occasions, I had to address it in regards to trying to get it cleaned up. So I really appreciate, from the hardest hit fund, the funds were dedicated to, uh, for demo projects within the city of Hammond and Gary, and East Chicago. And finally, this property is gone. So it was a eyesore, and I really appreciate their efforts in getting it torn down.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Just to settle a bet I had, the Bears are good.
They are fun to watch these days, aren't they?
No, but I had to, I said I'd say it if they.
Well, you being the, the Packer fan, right. Um, I wanted to mention, uh, that we had a ribbon cutting, uh, this past week at Edison Park. Uh, it was the first park, uh, of the ones that are being renovated that was completed. Uh, it's beautiful, and I am particularly proud, uh, because, uh, you always hear me talk about Edison Community Watch. And, uh, uh, our neighborhood group collected over eight hundred pounds of plastic bottle caps to get two plast, uh, benches made out of recycled bottle caps that we donated to, uh, the Edison Park Project. Uh, it blended in perfectly, uh, to such a beautiful design. And, uh, I, I just wanted to, uh, let everybody know that they need to come over to Edison Park, take a look at the beautiful park, um, on the south side of our city, and also admire the benches that our community group donated. Uh, any other new and unfinished business?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I want to address a, a food fight that we had at the last meeting and just sort of, I don't know how the council wants it to go about, but I think it would be, we'd be remiss if we didn't sort of talk about what the issue was last time. And I don't care how we march forward, but I think the public was confused about what we were talking about two weeks ago in regards to the residency ordinance. We, I believe in the residency ordinance, as mayor, of course. I proposed it. I know the council believes in the residency ordinance. There's no doubt in my mind about that. Um, we were talking about a one-time exemption that would have left the residency ordinance in place. Just want to make that clear because I think there's a misconception in the public about what happened two weeks ago, what we were talking about. And of course, when you eliminate departments, as we've done, and I'm the mayor, so as I've asked the council to authorize, and you guys authorized, there are vacancies. You know, there are people that are losing their jobs, and what we're trying to do is make tough decisions with people that we know. And in this case, you know, we were talking about a one-time exemption, leaving the residency ordinance in place, and that was the debate. But in no time was there any discussion ever about the residency ordinance itself. And I want to make that clear. So I don't know if you guys want to go further, and if you don't, I'm fine with that. I'm certainly not trying to cause any arguments. I just want to make it clear to the public what that was all about, you know? We have people losing their jobs because of decisions that I've made, you know, closing down the court. You know, the clerks staffing has gone way down, and people are trying to find jobs in the city. And that's what, you know, the dilemma that we find ourselves in. So I just wanted to clear, clarify that for the public more. I know you all know what we were arguing about, but the public, I think, was confused about it. I think they were wondering, first, and another thing is, we weren't hiring somebody off the street either. This particular employee had over twenty years' experience with the city. Has been here way before the residency ordinance was in place. So, you know, we don't make it a habit to go out and hire non-residents. That's just not the way it works here. So I don't know if anybody has anything else. I just wanted to clarify that more for the public. And I figured we might as well do it right here at the council meeting because this is where we had, you know, a debate two weeks ago about it.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, as, we're still under new and unfinished business. I would like to announce that coming up on, um, uh, December seventeenth, the Eastside Community Council, in partnership with the Hammond Police Department, uh, is having their holiday treats giveaway. Uh, I said the wrong date. It's Wednesday, December nineteenth, six P.M. at Hammond High School. Uh, they've already started shopping for the kids. Uh, if anybody, uh, has some time to wrap gifts, please give me a call, or you can give Leroy Howard a call. Uh, this is a, uh, just a wonderful collaboration between the Eastside Community Council and the Hammond Police Department. So, uh, please lend your support. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I would like to just acknowledge, uh, a couple of my constituents that are in the audience. One is, happens to be on the, uh, Redevelopment Commission, and that's Gregory Marwick. So they had a meeting, and, uh, he's here tonight. So I just wanted to acknowledge him, as well as.
Talk in the mic.
As well as one of my other constituents, as well as in the audience. So thank you for coming.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Ah, public expression is now open. George Stoya, you will have three minutes. He will take a pass. Okay, public expression is now closed. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn from this meeting. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Spatelli to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Everyone have a wonderful and blessed Thanksgiving. We'll see you next month. Bye.